Hello, thanks for tuning into Thurston County Connection, a production of Thurston County and Thurston Community Media. I'm your host, Robert Kim. Normally, the county commissioners host this show, but I'm filling in as we have all three commissioners as guests. With me is Chair John Hutchings from District 1, Vice Chair Gary Edwards from District 2, and Commissioner Ty Mensah from District 3. There will be no official business taking place today, but the commissioners invite you to attend their board meetings held on Tuesday afternoons at 2:00 PM in Room 280, a building one at the courthouse complex, to see government in action. You can also view the county master calendar of events to see when other business meetings may be of interest to you. So, I want to start out with our new commissioner, Ty. Ty Mensah, you're just brand-new, you've just recently been elected. How have you been settling in?
It's been a great month. It's been a whirlwind. Lots of information, lots of new boards, and John and Gary both made me feel very welcome. The staffs made me feel very welcome. Our county managers kept me up to speed on what's going on, and so it's been about as smooth as it could be, I think.
Is there anything you weren't expecting when you were campaigning that maybe came as a surprise?
I wasn't sure. I didn't know the county commissioners sat on so many, on the boards of so many organizations that I'd be working on, in addition to regular county business, I'd be working on animal services, and inner-city transit, and wastewater treatment, and watershed planting in the Chehalis. It's just a, it's a really wide array of, of a subject matter, subject matter areas.
So, your background is a lawyer, in addition to being a banjo player?
That's correct.
So, how is this different from, you were just talking about it earlier, how this is much more fun than, than being a lawyer?
It is. It's, you get into all different parts of the community. I'm moving around a lot, you know, as an attorney, basically, everybody comes to me. And I have my meetings, and people come into my office, and I'm on the phone, and I'm working on written documents, and maybe I roll to the court, you know, which is three or four minutes down the road. Now, I'm all over the county. I'm in Lewis County. I've been in, you know, for, for business. I've driving around, meeting all different groups at night, and I mean, it's just a totally different rhythm, different schedule, a lot of new areas of, of law and policy and community involvement, so it's really a good challenge. I mean, my legal career, I was in my 22nd year, so it's just a really, it's a really cool change. I'm really enjoying it.
Yeah, and you get to come to TV studios and be on a TV show.
That's true.
That's part of the fun.
Pretty neat.
And John, you aren't new to the commission, but you have a new title. You're the chair, so tell us about your new duties as the chair.
Well, I cut you off, but yes, I'm not new, I'm slightly used. And as the chair, I'm quite a bit busier. I've relinquished some of my commissions, or some of my boards, rather, that I sit on, or committees, to, to these fellows, my seatmates, because of the time committed that, for some of the things that the chair has to attend, for like, example, the WASAC Board, the risk pool, the Economic Development Council, the time spent up on the Hill with meeting with senators and representatives, and preparation to run these meetings, and where I'm also the chair of the Board of Health. And Ty and I sit on the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization as well. So, it's, it's quite busy, it's challenging, and I like it. And like Ty was comparing it with lawyering versus commissioning, I loved law enforcement, it was a lot of fun. And this has a similarity in that every day is different, but sometimes it's the usual suspects. It might be the same topic, in the same briefing, but it's, it's always moving, it's always active, so every day's new, and I like that. Makes it fun.
And Gary, you're the vice chair now. So, what, what else is new about being the vice chair? What else is new in addition to that? Are you on different boards this year, or anything like that? What's new with you?
Well, my fellow commissioners have mentioned a few of the boards. We're actually on something like 37 boards, or, I don't even know the number, it fluctuates once in a while. Is it 40-some boards? Anyway, it's pretty busy that way. If I had to pick a difference, I'm stuck reading the motions and such.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's my new assignment that the board chair used to do, you know? So, kind of a progression in the chairs, if you will. And so, this is no reflection on Ty whatsoever. We were here in the same position he's in two years ago, and it's, it's quite a learning curve. I will say, he's a quick study, so he's probably picking it up faster than we did. But it's a challenge to really get all of this down pat, and I'm not saying I've got it down yet. Every day, I work on it just a bit.
Well, I think you are all doing a fine job. Lately, there was a new decision that was just made on the location of a new county courthouse. And I know the, the public's real interested in what you have to say about that. I'm going to go ahead and let each of you comment on, on the new courthouse and civic center. Let's start with you, Gary. Go in order. You just get the luck of where you're sitting.
How about, I don't know, I suppose the, the paper, I don't know if they've laid out how the vote went, but the vote went 2 to 1. And we can have disagreements and be very civil amongst ourselves, and we might each have our own reason for that. Now, that being said, I was not in favor of the downtown site. There was a request for a delay, there were some other, other issues that could have played into this. The west side over by Kaiser didn't have an exit from 101, and it's, it's disruptive to remodel our existing location. But I just didn't feel it was the right spot. But, that being said, it's kind of like if you need a school, you need a school. If the school isn't selected in your backyard, or where you think it ought to be, doesn't mean you still don't agree we need a school. And that's kind of where we're coming from here. We might, we'll work things out amongst us, and how things will proceed, but we do need a courthouse. That's, you know, the one we've got doesn't even have thermal pane windows in it, and it was a low bid build way back in the 70s, and, you know, to fix that roof is getting close to a million dollars, and it's leaking. The upkeep on that whole thing, the underground wiring system blew out here a month or so ago, so it isn't like we don't need a courthouse.
Right.
Now, to what extent are we going to go? A lot of that's going to be decided by the voters yet, you know, but we do need a courthouse.
Yeah, and all the ADA compliance, and
Sure.
There's, there's a number of reasons.
Many, many, many things.
And if you, if you aren't aware, the, the new location is on Plum Street, where the old Olympia City Hall once was, or is, but will be torn down and replaced.
And Ty probably recognizes this much more than I do, being active in the courts as much as he was, but court security is a big issue.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And we need to address that for our employees, jurors that are coming in, and defendants. I mean, if we end up with a mistrial because of an interaction in the hallway that shouldn't have been observed, or whatever it is, those are expensive propositions that we need to overcome.
I'm going to go to you next, Ty, and what are your thoughts on, on the new courthouse and civic center? What are you excited about? What are you worried about?
Well, I, I just want to kind of reemphasize what Gary said, which is that it's, it's the new interesting decision where the final location is, but that's not really the issue. The issue is that we have to have the complex. And exactly what he said about if you need a school, you still need the school, may not be your favorite location, doesn't, doesn't really matter. I hope voters will not make their decision based on the, the location decision that we made. They should make it on the fact that the, the complex is unsafe, it's, it can't be upgraded, it's absolutely inadequate space-wise. Our district court is operating on less than half of the needed space it needs today, and we're projected to grow by 40% in 20 years, so it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. So, I'm hope, the, the important thing is that the voters understand the importance of the project, and not get hung up on, on where it's going to be built, because I think that's kind of a secondary concern. I was, you know, I did vote for Plum and Union because of its, it felt to me most consistent with the character of the neighborhood in which it is, in which, in which it would be cited. I was very concerned about locating it on the west side, and essentially turning west side of Olympia into more of a downtown feel. It didn't, it didn't feel consistent with, with the character of this neighborhood over here. It felt good to put it where the, where the freeway access already was, where the bus lines already were, where the social services already are for the defendants that, and the folks that use the court system, where we could partner with Olympia, combine our municipal and district and superior courts into one, which will be, I think, absolutely fantastic. So, that was what, that's what led me to that decision. But the voters should really just focus on the need for this, and why it's important, and we were able to get our, our timeframe on the, on the bond repayment extended, which is, which is a wonderful opportunity for us to do something really great for this community with this project.
Excellent. John, you also voted for the Plum Streets?
I did. I was never a fan of downtown Olympia, when it was being proffered that it would be around the lot, or the port property, or by the Children's Hands-On Museum, for safety issues, sea level rise, earthquake-type activity, ingress and egress, should the, any protesters come in and shut down government, or try to shut down government. I didn't think that was a good, safe decision to make down there. But Athan Plum, where the, the current Lee Creighton Justice Center is, and it's named after Lee Creighton, because he was the first elected municipal court judge in Olympia, and one heck of a nice man. It seemed, that's, to me, that's far enough away from the downtown court, that I don't have those concerns. And so, it seemed logical to me, because the expense and disruption of government, or the continuity of government, with all the phase, five or six phases, if we were to remodel Lakewood, where we are now, or putting it way out there on the west side where there's not sufficient transportation, or off-ramps and access out there, even though development would come. And like Ty, on the west side, neighbors out there didn't want a building, government building in their backyard, so it seemed to fit better in the downtown, or, you know, Athan Plum, outside of the downtown court, but where there's other governmental buildings surrounding it. So, that made sense to me.
Gary?
Could I just mention one other thing? We ended up making a decision based on three locations that were final, finally selected, but originally, we started out with more than 12. It, it, it went from quite a few more, but, okay, these 12 are feasible, and then down from there. So, there was, maybe, maybe they're not the best choice, but, you know, the way the law is written, we have to abide by that. And so, first of all, it had to be within the city limits, and when the city was incorporated, what were those limits? And that's the boundary it had to be in.
Oh, really? In the original boundary?
Yeah, in the original boundary.
That's the county seat.
And, you know, there's the urban growth area, that's the surrounding area designated by Growth Management. Maybe that should have been included in, but it's not within the city limits. So, all these things would have to take a longer period of time working with the legislature, and maybe they would, and maybe they wouldn't. In the meantime, we're pumping a lot of money into the upkeep on this new, on the old facility, so.
Before we get off the topic of the courthouse, I want the public to know that if you go to the Thurston County website, or YouTube, you can follow and see the entire progress from beginning to end, and how we arrived at the decision. And our staff at the county did tremendous amount of outreach all over the county to get input from the, from the community. But we absolutely, using the school analogy, we have to have it. We have no place to put jurors, and jurors are bumping into defendants, defendants are bumping into judges, judges are bumping into jurors, and you can't have that. It just, legitimately, doesn't make sense. And of course, the security of all of our employees. So, the need is there, but the next step is preparing this to go to the voters to get their permission. All we did was select a site. Now, it goes to the county, or it goes to the, all the popular, you know, the, the voters of the county, to decide, are you going to fund it or not?
You just, you know, took my, my next question right out of my, which was, what can citizens expect to see later in the year? So, specifically, they will vote on this.
There'll be a lot of outreach. Yeah, well, August or November, and there'll be quite a bit of outreach back into the community, questions and answers, and people have a lot of questions that they want answers to. But there'll be a lot of information, public information campaign going on out there as well. And then, it's going to be prepared for the ballot, the ballot piece will be written and such.
And I might mention, that's going to be a citizens group that is advocating
Thank you, yeah.
For this particular activity. Your county employees, per se, will not be advocating. They might be supplying information, as we will. But there is a citizens group that's put together, and you'll be hearing more about it.
I want to go over two or three issues you really want to focus on this year, and I'm going to start on the other side now. We started with Gary, I'm going to start with you, John. What are two or three issues you really want to focus on this year?
This year, I want to focus on the homelessness issue. And by that, I mean, and we've been hearing quite a bit about that in the media, and quite a bit about that in public comment, even just today. And we have an eight-hour work session coming up in a couple of weeks, where we're going to spend the entire day working with Public Health and Social Services, the Behavioral Health, or Board of Health, rather, as well as the city of Olympia. What's the scope of the problem? What has been tried? What's in progress now? What can we do to really assist and help these folks that have diseases of despair? And help them get a hand up? So, that's, that's one of the, one of the major issues. Another one for me would be mental health. I've been working on mental health since 2001, and I've been working with Senator Randy Becker on a telehealth bill that she has, and if it passes this session, it will be the first in the country to have the system set up through the University of Washington, where kids in middle school and high school can pick up a phone and talk with a psychiatrist. They can get help right now. For those that are at, that have been identified by trained upwards, and there'll be additional training to the bill as well, to identify kids that are special risk to themselves or others, and/or at risk of substance abuse. And so, they will, that's a, it's a beautiful thing to offer more mental health treatment or assistance for, for our youth. And then, equal rights, not only for our employees, but the entire county, and the LGBTQ community as well. They have some bills in the, in the House right now that are trying to pass, and the Uniform Parenting Act passed last year, but it took effect this month, January, and that is coming into play now for same-sex couples that have children, where one doesn't have to go through the legal expensive process of adopting a child. So, I want to work and focus on those issues as well.
All worthwhile. Very good. How about you, Ty? Two or three issues you want to focus on this year?
Sure. Well, I have some overlap with, with what John said, which is probably good, so we can work on them together. One is housing, because obviously, this is what we hear about. It's when you, when you interview the community, that's the number-one issue. It's what you hear about everywhere you go. I think we would be remiss if we didn't put attention to that this year. So, hopefully, we can work with our cities to work out kind of a regional strategy for this. I'm really excited to get this process going. Second would be to get our Habitat Conservation Plan done, or as done as it can be from our end. Federal government's back in business, and hopefully, they'll give us the guidance that we need to move that forward. I'd really love to see that get sort of near completion. It's been plaguing our citizens of our county for so many years. A third big area, which somewhat overlaps what John just said, is mental health. And I'm, my, my specific focus is mental health as it connects to our criminal justice system. I was a criminal defense attorney in the community, and a former public defender, so it's, it's an area I feel comfortable with, and it's, I have a lot of, you know, knowledge coming in. It's a, it's an area I felt like I could get on the, hit the ground running with, because I already had the relationships with our prosecutor, public defense, the, the judges, probation, pre-trial services, corrections. So, I'm trying to figure out ways that we can, we have a Law and Justice Council, for example. We're writing a new charter. We're going to, I'm advocating for including citizens advisory on, on that committee, which I think was pretty well-received at our first meeting. I would like to create some task force within that council that will look at long-range, you know, look at experimentation that's being done outside the jurisdiction, bring data back and figure out, is that working? Would it translate to our community? We had a presentation, I just talked about it at our meeting today, from Snohomish County to the opioid task force that has been spearheaded by our prosecutor, John Toonheim, and Shelley Slaughter of our Public Health Department of Thurston County, our co-chairs of the opioid response task force. They brought in a presentation from Snohomish County, some things that I think would very well translate to Thurston County, if we could figure out how to make them work. Just examples of that are a multi-agency collaboration group that met first weekly, and then scaled it back to bi-weekly, to try to just really monitor the problem on a, on a week-by-week basis with the numbers coming in. A diversion center where law enforcement would have a place if they didn't want to do an arrest or in a criminal booking, but somebody that, to connect to treatment, it'd be sort of a place for people to go for up to 14 days while they connected with a treatment resource. A third thing was a resource center, sort of a, it's almost like Lacy's Veterans Hub concept, but for the broader community, mental health, homelessness, and substance abuse resources in, in one place, kind of one-stop shopping for services. And then, the fourth element was the embedded social work and law enforcement teams. We kind of tried to do that a little bit with our lead program, but it never got off the ground. I'd like to find out, what did they do in Snohomish County to make that work? Because apparently, law enforcement and the social workers are very comfortable with it, which, you know, is, seems, seems like a big, a big thing to accomplish, but it's working well, especially when you're talking about mental health.
Right.
See, mental health is It's tied to so many other issues. LGBTQ, the youth in schools, homelessness, the jail. It's everywhere, and those, these folks aren't being tended to, that need the help.
Yeah, how is the, the triage center, the mental health triage center coming along? And is it addressing, you know, some of this?
Well, from what I hear, it is. That's, that's, I don't have the numbers to spout.
We're adding six beds, I think.
We're looking at adding six beds, yes.
Six more beds.
But I don't know what the numbers are of the total people served, and, but I hear from law enforcement that they love the triage. Not only the triage, but the crisis response team, because when, when they come out and assess, the officers will go out there and assess someone, and render the scene static or safe, call the crisis response team, and they run that person out to the triage center so they can get some, some therapy and some help.
Yeah.
And then, the officers go back on duty, and the crisis response team is ready to go to the next one. And I think Olympia, with the tax they just, the citizens just approved, are going to have some embedded mental health professionals working in the, in concert with the downtown patrol.
Yeah, for our viewers, this is where law enforcement can take an individual to the triage for mental health assessment, so instead of filling up a jail cell.
Right.
Somebody that doesn't need to be there, that it would actually impact their life very badly if, you know, they were thrown in jail.
And then, they, they provide housing for those folks and other resources. They just don't evaluate them and kick them out the door.
And then, our prosecutor, John Toonheim, has put together a first-look program, and that also eliminates those folks from plugging up the jail, so. As you can see, we've got a lot of issues. Haven't even got to mine yet.
Oh, yeah.
I'm already busy. And they're all good priorities, and I think we do have overlap on all of them, because they are a priority issue. Now, each one of us might have, you know, a little more, we're going to pay a little more attention to this. I'm a veteran, so I do pay particular attention to veterans' issues, and all of the topics we've talked about affect veterans. So, we, we need to work, you know, with the Lacy Hub and all that. Lacy has been very instrumental in putting that all together with the Lacy Hub. One of the, one of the better operations in the United States, not just the state of Washington. So, we are kind of stepping forward in a lot of areas. Jail overcrowding for mental health, opioid, all those things, the whole homeless thing. I'm kind of a tough-love kind of a guy, so I want to help, but I want to hold people accountable, and I don't want to enable, I want to encourage. So, we probably all will have a little different take on, on where we're approaching our particular problems from. Water quality. I know we all are concerned about water quality. And just since I've been here on the commission, I found out that commercial application of fertilizers by the thousands of tons are applied all through our private forest lands by helicopter in the headwaters, where all our water comes from. And if you'll read a book called Toxic Pearl, now I find out that we're applying all types of chemicals in our saltwater areas to enhance the shellfish industry, I guess, is what it's all about. But everything seems to be about money. We've got to clean up Capital Lake. Well, where's the problem coming from? I mean, cleaning up Capital Lake is one thing, but what's the point if we don't figure out what the problem is? So, recently, we'd sent a letter to the state asking that they consider all areas of the Deschutes River, because it flows into Capital Lake, and it's part of the problem. Not just focus on one little area, you know, five miles before the lake or something, because it's part and parcel of the whole problem. We need to get to the bottom of everything. I would, I would encourage folks to kind of pay attention and follow some of these issues, because I didn't know to the extent of chemical application was taking place in our forest lands, or that on our shellfish areas, that there was so much of that activity going on. And, you know, it seems like ecology oversees it, but I don't think they're in the same plane with us. I was out to a meeting out at Yelm the other day about biosolids. It's all about sewage, human sewage from sewage plants, and it's applied to different areas for different purposes, and they've allowed to permit to be almost put in place, I guess the permit is moving forward, out by Yelm, there was about 200 people there. Those people are very upset that ecology is allowing that type of a product to be put in close proximity to the river, and ecology itself admits they don't know the detrimental effect of pharmaceuticals, for, that just as one example, let alone the other issues of heavy metal and other things that might be in these products. And why put them where the water table is high, and the soil is shallow, and the hard pan is right there, close, and the river's close? Why not go to eastern Washington somewhere, where it's a desert country, and let Mother Nature have some time to do something with these toxicities that we're dealing with? Because unfortunately, as a society, we end up creating these things, and we do have to deal with them, but let's do it in the smartest way we can.
Right.
And I know this is, Ty and I have talked a little bit about this, although we don't get to talk about work-related things unless we're in a public meeting, pre-scheduled, and then we get a little bit of time to talk about it.
Or if you're on a TV set, and we've made the announcement that no official
We're not making any official business here today.
This tape is evidence.
That's right. We're reminded, no official business is taking place.
Yeah.
So, I want to just finish up with, with a final question, and let you kind of say what you want to the voters. And we're going to start with you, Ty, because we started with Gary, then we started with John, and now it's your turn. So, this question is, what do you want to tell the citizens of Thurston County?
Well, I would encourage the citizens of Thurston County to, to try to better understand their county government and all the different things that we do, and track us, and give us input and feedback. I just finished a long year of campaigning and knocked on a lot of doors where people, the most common question I got is, what's a county commissioner? And so, you know, people really don't have a good sense of what we do, and we have really great public information officers in our, in our county that are trying to change that, and we do programs like this, and hopefully, people will watch. But I would just ask them, you've got three pretty nice guys up here that are working hard to try to solve problems for you. Let us know what you're thinking. Let us know, you know, when you're not happy. We, we listen carefully to that, and we're happy to get that input and try to steer the county in the right direction.
And what's the best way for them to do that? Do you want them to email you? Do you want them to come to the meeting and do public comment? What's the best? Or, or give us a few options?
We can be contacted through the website, at Thurston County, the Board of County Commissioners. We each have a, a separate email. Sometimes people reach out to the commissioner that's in their district, for example. I represent the west side of the county, but you don't have to do it that way. We all represent the Thurston County, so it's really up to you as a citizen, whether you want to reach out by email or come to a meeting, make a comment. We have 2:00 PM on Tuesdays at the very beginning of the meeting, so you don't have to wait two hours right up front. You get a chance to have three minutes on almost any topic. Basically, there are a few rules in the, about it, and we go through those at the beginning, but it's a wide-open forum for, for citizens to let us know on important issues. And we've heard all sorts of things just here in the last, you know, month that we've been doing, that I've been doing this, so that's a good way. We have phones, too.
Yeah, I was going to ask. How about phone calls?
There's phone call, there's phone, there's email.
And that's on the website?
Absolutely.
At the contact page, or something on the website?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Okay. How about you, Gary? What do you want to tell the citizens of Thurston County?
Well, you know, one of the things that I often get asked is, what's your agenda? Well, you know, one of the things that I often get asked is, what's your agenda? Well, my agenda is to do the right thing for the citizens of Thurston County. And by citizen involvement, we adjust that agenda as to how the citizens that are, are feeding us information in whichever format that they choose. I mean, they ain't write us a letter yet. We still take postage, you know?
There, there's a way.
That comes in, you know? So anyway, they want to get ahold of us, get ahold of us. And that's my whole agenda is to do the right thing. And, and what's right for me is, is probably right for you, right for Ty, right for John. I mean, if you really think about it, we want to, we want to leave an environment to our kids, for an example, that's as pristine as it can be. I don't know anybody that doesn't want clean water and clean air. So get ahold of us. We'll make whatever adjustments we need to make to make sure that we are communicating with you. Oftentimes, people will come to our public meeting and they have that three-minute comment period and we just kind of sit there and take a few notes. But the reality is, that's not the time for discussion back and forth. That's strictly the time for us to hear their concerns about whatever their issue is. Because believe it or not, what they're talking about might be their most important thing in their life. And that's what got them to come forward and talk about that particular issue at that point in time. So we need to respect that and do what we can. Sometimes we can't. It's outside our bailiwick. It's a legislative issue, whatever it might be. But at the point in time when it's brought to our attention in that particular public meeting, we're not going to have an open dialogue with you at that time. But usually, the following meeting, we get comments back from the county manager that has looked into some of the different issues that have been brought to, to our attention. And then he'll give some response to it or sometimes it'll move forward and be an agenda item at some point or a work session item. So I'm just, I want to do the right thing.
And even though you're not talking back after they give a public comment, you are listening.
Oh, yes.
It's just not time.
We are listening.
Listening. That's the time to listen. Okay. And John, what would you like?
To start, we're always listening. And with the, with the level, let me start with this. I'm, I'm just one of three commissioners, but I'm one of about 1,100 county employees. I'm one of about 280,000 people in this county. I'm a part, just a small part of something big, bigger than me. And I take that seriously. And with the level of discourse or the lack of civility from the national level on down, I have to refer to Tip O'Neill's book, All Politics is Local. And he was the Speaker of the House for decades. And it really is, all politics is local. And so just as my seatmates have said, if anybody calls us, they can have an audience with us in our office. Well, I'll speak for me, in my office. They call, leave a message. They will hear back from me or my assistant or staff. They will hear from someone. If a letter is written, they will get some type of a response. We are listening. We are responsive. We, I'll speak for them, but we care. We really do. And I realize that I do work for these 200 some odd thousand folks in this community. And we are doing, I'm doing everything that I can to make the right decision. I take the best of both parties because I'm an independent. I take the best of both parties and try to play that to make the best decision I can for, for Thurston County. And sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's tough. But we can be civil. And if we can be civil and we're civil to the folks coming in, please engage us. Engage your government, address us, redress us. We're here. We signed up for that. Take advantage of it. And please, believe us, when we say we need a courthouse or county administration building, civic complex, we're not talking about a conference center. We're talking about the treasurer, the auditor, all the departments that, that people access and use on a regular basis, not just the court. But we really need that building. Engage, please. That's what I would tell them.
All right. Excellent. So I think that's all we're going to have time for today on this episode of Thurston County Connection. And we will look forward to you hosting the next episode or one of you hosting and, and continuing on throughout the year. And that'll be exciting. So looking forward to that. Thanks for joining us today. To watch more Thurston County programs like this one, head to the county's YouTube channel at the URL below. There you can live stream board meetings and much more.